Once we go live, I'll let you know. All right, and we're live.
Okay, so I'll get us started. Welcome, everyone. Good morning. I'm happy to call this meeting of the Hamilton Wentworth District School Board Liaison Committee to Order. Members of the public are advised that our meetings are webcast live by the City of Hamilton and temporarily archived on the city's website, and that other individuals and the media may also be audibly and or visually recording this meeting. So we have presentations and reports considered at this meeting. These are available on the city's website, and members of the public can contact the clerk's office to acquire documents in an alternative format. Reminder that all electronic devices not required for participation in the meeting are to be switched to a non-audible function. Let me do that myself. During the committee meeting, members of the committee are reminded that there's a five-minute time limit which will be adhered to during the meeting. Members can always submit another request to speak if they require more time to ask questions or make comments. So today, we have present trustee Deeth and myself from HWDSB. Trustee Miller sent regrets, unfortunately. We have councillor Partridge, Mayor Eisenberger, and we would also like to welcome our new additional member to this committee, councillor Powers. Welcome. Okay, and we do have quorum present. I will note that our student trustees were not able to attend and are not part of quorum. So, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda today?
Yes, Madam Chair. Due to trustee Miller's unexpected regrets, item 10.2 will be deferred until the next meeting of the HWDSB Liaison Committee.
Thank you. And so with that change, can I have a mover and a seconder to approve the agenda as amended? I see trustee D. Thank you. And councillor Partridge, I think, meet you too at councillor Powers. So moved by trustee D., seconded by councillor Partridge.
Actually, with councillor Powers being new, I will step down and let him move it.
Okay, so seconded by councillor Powers. And just by a show of hands, I have you all on screen, all in favor. Yeah, thank you. That is carried. Okay, in terms, item three is declarations of interest. So I'll just pause for a moment and ask if anyone on the committee has a conflict of interest to declare. Okay, seeing none, we can move on. Item 4.1, we're looking for approval of the minutes from May the 9th, 2022, and I'll be looking for a mover and a seconder to approve the minutes of the HWDSB Liaison Committee from June 27th, 2022, as presented. Let me just see. I think I saw trustee Deeth's hand and councillor Partridge's hands, so moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? Okay, and all in favor by show of hands. Thank you. That's everyone, and that's carried. Okay, we have a number of consent items. Item 7.1 is the Hamilton Wentworth District School Board Terms of Reference as amended by council on July the 8th, 2022. Is there any discussion on the revised terms of reference that you'll see in your package? I'm seeing some hands. Councillor Partridge, followed by councillor Powers. Councillor Partridge?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair. Just one comment, and I'm trying to find it here. There is, the word "well-being" is being used in here, and it's showing it as one word. It's picky, but I believe it's a hyphenated word. But the other thing, more importantly, at the top, it says amended by council July 8, 2022 by AFNA report. But at the bottom, it says, on page two, it says revised December 19, 2018. And I'm wondering if that should be changed to the July the 8th, or put an amendment, or something at the bottom, as opposed to at the top. So that's just my question to clerks.
Thank you. I'll just turn to the clerks. Aleah, are you able to comment?
Hi, everyone. It's Tamara speaking. Aleah's having a bit of a technical problem, but she can't hear the meeting and heard the question. I think these are just editorial corrections that can be made. We'll go through it and see if there are any others as well. Definitely change to that July 8th date, and we can add that hyphen. I believe it should be hyphen'd as well. So those are just editorial corrections that we can make.
Yeah, thank you. And that is on the hyphenated is page two, item 11. Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, councillor Partridge. Councillor Powers?
Thank you. My first question is relative to the heading is "meeting" format, so it's on the first page. And item one, if you read the last sentence, it said, "Meetings will be held at either City Hall or the Board Office," which is absolutely no problems with, "in view of our virtual situations." If I was to read that particularly, it would indicate that they are physical meetings held at either of the two offices. So my assumption is that whatever the format is, it's either stick handled out of the school board offices or out of City Hall. So I just need clarification on that question, and then I have another one.
Thank you for raising that. That's a great question. I'll turn to Tamara.
You, so councillor Powers, I'm not sure what you mean by "stick hand." That's a sports reference that I don't understand. But the, all meetings are clerked by city staff. It is a city, it's a council committee, subcommittee. So all meetings are clerked by city office staff. So in that regard, all the procedures would be the same regardless of the location. With the advent of the hybrid meetings, the procedural that part. So this would be, the chair would simply take turns chairing the committee. We used to have alternate locations for convenience for the two members. I wasn't traveling all the time. But now that we're going to be having hybrid meetings, and that's not necessary, I don't believe we can, we can stream from the
Madam Clerk, you keep cutting out, and we're missing a good part of what you're saying. So just so you know, okay?
Yes.
So I think we just missed a little bit around, you were just providing the history, but you were just mentioning with hybrid meetings, it's not necessary to be at one location or the other. To the question, though, should that be captured in the terms of reference?
No, and that was my point. Sorry, if I was cutting out the our procedural bylaws.
Unfortunately, you're still cutting out for us. If you could try repeating that.
All right, is this better? Can you hear me better now?
Much better.
Yes, okay, sorry about that. I had my headset off so that Aleah could hear the meeting as well. She's having trouble with her laptop. And so I've put my headset back on. So our procedure and the process for hybrid meeting? Still cutting out? I can see councillor
You are.
Yes.
So the explanation she gave, I think, is very acceptable from that standpoint, as long as there's the understanding that hybrid meetings are possible and are allowed for under the procedural bylaws of the city and the school board. So I'll go on to my next question, Madam Chair, if possible.
Thank you, councillor Powers.
The next one is item four, the quorum. And it says, "We're made up of four members of two trustees and two councillors." The mayor's not a councillor. I know in your case, you are a trustee, and by election by your colleagues, you become the chair. But should it be two members of Hamilton City Council, or rather than, in this case, it would only be councillor Partridge and myself and subsequent ones? And I'm just thinking that's perhaps a better clarification to allow not only the mayor's involvement, but he could be one of the two if indeed that's the case. Thank you. That's my question.
Thank you again for that question. Great clarification. So Tamara, would it be possible to update the terms of reference to reflect to trustee and to council members as opposed to the language we see currently? That's a great point. We've had the mayor here as part of quorum for the last few meetings.
Yes. Don't have the terms of reference right in front of me, but my understanding was that they did, it was to, it was members, council, and members of the school board. Can you hear me?
Yes, a little better. So I can read it to you. It just says, "Quorum will be four, made up of two trustees and two councillors." So if we could have that language adjusted to reflect that the mayor could be a member, or would be a member.
Which the council.
Unfortunately, you are still breaking up, and we can't hear you. I'm not sure if there's another microphone that we can try.
Can you hear me now?
Let me just note that the mayor's ex officio on all middies, actually. So maybe Tamara can, when we get our audio, clear that up as well. But I think the language that you're recommending is just fine.
And Tamara, perhaps if you wanted, you could post something in the chat, and I could state it out loud if that helps. But the problem is, why we're not getting Okay, can hear you a little bit now, but it's quite quiet. All right. Okay, can hear you? Yep.
Yep. So the intention is, and it may, I'm thinking that it may have been changed just to try to read the mayor's calendar and the chairs, and the chair of the school board, the board's calendars as well. But they have to be there as chair. So let do it and see what the issue is, and whether there's a reason for that changing. And then we can report back to the next meeting, which will be in the new term, of course.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So if it's being, if it's coming back next meeting, then Tamara, just correct me if I'm wrong, we won't be receiving those at this meeting?
We'll receive them right now, and then we'll just bring them back, that information back to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. So then I'm looking for a mover and a seconder to receive the terms of reference as amended by council July 8th, 2022, noting that we'll have additional information coming back at the next meeting, for which I might be a member, but no one else will be. Thank you, trustee Deeth, councillor Partridge. By show of hands, all in favor? Okay, thank you. That carries. Okay, we'll move along then to 72. That is minutes of the Joint Property Assessment Committee, 72A, is from November 4th, 2019. Is there any discussion on the J-PAC minutes? I'm not seeing any hands. I just have one question, and, you know, noting that it has been some time since this committee has met, and we appreciate that we've restarted a regular schedule of meetings. And I understand J-PAC has not met since November 4th, 2019. There are a number of items that I'm sure we would love to have updates on. Do we have any idea when that is scheduled to meet next? To the clerk? Or staff? Okay, I'm not hearing any response. I don't know if you're still having trouble with audio, Tamara, but I see our senior manager of facilities, David Anderson, do you have a date that it's scheduled?
So through the chair, thank you for the question. Staff on both parties are still working to schedule the next meeting. So at this time, we do not have that scheduled.
Thank you. Okay, and trustee Deeth?
Thank you. Thank you, and through the chair. Sorry, I just had a question in regards to standing agenda items, SA 8, Guy Brown School and City Park Lands. And I noticed that's been marked complete and closed. There was public information sessions, Janet, to provide information. Can you just, is it possible to give me a little bit more information on that item?
Okay, and I'm not sure who would like to respond to that. We have a number of people here from HWDSB. I was remiss in not welcoming our new director of education, Cheryl Robinson Petrazini, who's with us today. But is there a board or city staff that would like to respond to the question? Senior Manager Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you. And through the chair, I believe that item was tied to the pathway that runs through the adjacent city park that was paved in partnership with the city. So we did some paving work on our property and then tied in through the city park for access.
Thank you, trustee Deeth.
Perfect. Thank you. Can I just ask, is that going to be, that pathway cleared? Is that by the city or by us? Because I know it's been a problem in the past.
Okay, and I'm just going to ask you to hold that question for a moment, as our clerks are having internet connection issues. So we need to make sure that they're able to actually support the meeting. So we'll just get that.
Madam Chair, can you hear me? It's Tamara?
Yes.
Yes, okay. We've moved from the room we were in to my desk. Aleah is coming. That's, our internet connection should be improved. Hold on one second.
It does sound better.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. Sorry about that. We were in a room and seem to lost, have lost our internet connection, our Wi-Fi in there. So we lost you at the J-PAC question?
Yes.
Did you get an answer to that question at all?
Yes, we did. So senior manager Anderson from HWDSB just responded that they're working on scheduling the next meeting, but it is not yet scheduled. And then trustee Deeth asked a question about, where did I go, SA 8, about the Guy Brown School and City Park Lands, and what that related to. And then we heard that it related to the walkway that is adjacent to the school. So follow-up question trustee Deeth was, will that walkway be cleared? And that's, you mean by the city? Okay, and seeing Mr. Hurstak, please go ahead.
Chris Hurstak, Director of Recreation. If I recall correctly from that last meeting, that city staff were to remove the snow and clear the snow of that pathway. But I will follow up with Dave and his staff when I connect with parks.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Nope, that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, not seeing anything else. So looking for a mover and a seconder to receive the November 4th, 2019 minutes from the Joint Property Assessment Committee. And if you put your hand up, I missed it. So go ahead and do that again. Thank you, trustee Deeth. Do you have a seconder? Thank you, councillor Partridge. And all in favor, by show of hands? Thank you. That's carried. Okay, moving to discussion items, item 10. We have burms. 10.1 is burms at Bernie Morally Recreation Center, Bernie Cassa Secondary School. This is a joint city, Hamilton Wentworth District School Board report, PW 22082. In Ward 3, may have a mover and a seconder to put the report on the floor. Thank you, councillor Powers, moving that, seconded by trustee Deeth. And is there any discussion on the staff report that you have in your package? Mayor Eisenberger?
Yeah, I appreciate the report, and it sounds like one of the burms can be removed at a cost. So I guess the question becomes, you know, who's picking up the cost for that particular effort? I see the breakdown, it's something in around an estimate of $65,000 to accomplish that, and will still require one berm to be left. And so is it going to be, you know, suitable for kind of recreational use? And I know that that was somewhat of the intent, is to free up some space, but there seems to be some drainage issues and some berm security issues that are, you know, part of the mix here. So let me just ask through you two, Dave, or anyone else that wants to answer, is this, is this going to accomplish what the school board would like to see in terms of additional green space in and around the school?
Thank you. And just looking to see, senior manager Anderson, if you're able to respond, or if we have someone else that was
Yeah, Cynthia Graham's on the call as well, who was a part of our Parks Division as well. So whoever wants to tackle that, feel free.
So I'll go ahead and get started, and just high level. Thank you for the question through the chair. The intent is to certainly make the area, the space more usable, usable in terms of perhaps light activity, gym class, not necessarily sports practice or anything defined as a team sport, but just usable. So this, in high level, certainly meets the intent.
Thank you. Did you want to add anything, Cynthia?
Thank you. Through the chair, Cynthia Graham, Manager of Landscape Architectural Services. I just, yeah, I wanted to reiterate that the removal of the burms would create a flatter space, but certainly not to sports field standards, understanding that that would increase the usefulness for the school for that purpose.
Okay, thank you. And just, who's picking up the tab on this one? If we're to proceed, and it sounds like there's desire on school board side to proceed. So who is, who's picking up the cost for getting this work done?
Thank you. Perhaps, I don't know if manager Graham or senior manager Anderson can respond, noting in the report, it talked about possibly sharing costs. If you'd like to respond to that.
I can start on the, from the city side through the chair. So as indicated in the report, we don't have any dedicated city funds for this. So staff would need direction to provide a funding source, if that was the desire from council.
Okay, so can we work with the area councillor? Ward 3, I take it is. And there's some area-rated funding that could be utilized. So I imagine there'd be some synchronicity there in terms of desire to create some usable space, not only for the school, but for the community at large. So is there a conversation happening with councillor Nan to that end?
Through the chair. I understood that the councillor has been involved in the conversations to date, was advised that this report was coming to this subcommittee, and that further conversations regarding the project could happen once this report was presented. So we can, as staff, go back to councillor Nan and have those conversations at this time.
Great. Okay, so it sounds like cost sharing is the way forward here, and then there'll be some, some conversations with councillor Nan to kind of advance this on the city side. And then I guess Chair Danko, you'll shepherd it through your appropriate process.
Absolutely. Thank you for those questions.
That's great. Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none. May I have a mover and a seconder to receive the staff report? Thank you, Mayor Eisenberger, moving it, seconder. Thank you, trustee Deeth. And all in favor by show of hands? Thank you. That carries. Okay, I'll just remind the public that item 10.2 has been deferred to our next meeting, as trustee Miller was not able to be with us today. And we'll move along to general information or other business. Item 13, is there any other business? Trustee Deeth?
Thank you. And through the chair, this is just something I wanted to bring up with this being sort of my last meeting, but, and wondering where this would land. So it was great, under our terms of reference, to include health and well-being as part of our mandate. But I'm just wondering if we can, if there's a way to put some meat on the bones with this. And what I'm referring to is, I know how J-PAC reports to us, where we get updates, you know, from that joint committee. And I'm wondering around health and well-being. So to give you just, I guess, a little bit of a background, back when our previous director first came on board, and I think it was, I think it was the first or second year I was a trustee, we met with Dr. Richardson and our director to discuss public health and our board, and the ways that we could collaborate more together around having, you know, maybe some kind of a framework, or what that looked like, but just having a little more collaboration between the two. And I know a lot of work happened. They looked at different frameworks. I know public health was working on a framework, which I believe was changed again. So I'm not sure where that all ended up. And I understand, I have a tremendous respect for our public health, and considering all that they've been through these last couple of years, and things are in turmoil. But I did want to put it out there because it would be great to have some kind of report that came to this committee. So council and trustees were aware of some of the collaboration happening between, and I'm not saying just public health, there may be other areas within the city, working with our, as you know, we have superintendents of health and well-being that I know already work with public health. And obviously, the focus last couple of years has been around COVID. But moving forward, I just wanted to sort of put it out there and see if there is an opportunity to have something, a report that would come to this committee, as, so we know that sort of the health and well-being is moving forward. So I just wanted to put it out there, because like I said, it may be for us, as you know, we have a new director as well, and she's getting up to speed. So, you know, I didn't want to drop this on her at this time as well. But I'm just saying, this is not something that has to happen overnight. I'm just saying that I just wanted to make mention and make sure that we're capturing it and talking how we are working, and that even, you know, some of it was around our public health nurses working in our schools, and having some framework that guides the work that they do. So, you know, we'll be, I know we'll be continuing to work at our board on that. But I just thought this would be a good committee where this report can come forward. So you're kept up to date on the work that's happening. And like I said, it could have been stalled for the last couple of years, but I think just moving forward. So I'll stop there and just see what, how everybody feels about it.
Thank you. And certainly open the floor for discussion. Is there some informal committee that could report to this, this committee on the items that trustee Deeth was referring to, and particularly the collaboration with public health and the strategies to support our use? I'm not sure if the clerk's office is able to comment on that. Let's see, Angela?
Hi there. Sorry, through you, Madam Chair, it's Tamara again. The, there is no committee that works on this, on this specifically, that would be, and it wouldn't be appropriate for one committee to report to another in that way, if it did exist. I think if I'm understanding, or thinking about, trustee Deeth, thinking about a, an ongoing reporting mechanism for the, for the work that's being done? Councillor Partridge is waving her hands.
Certainly, if you have, want to jump in, councillor Partridge, go ahead.
Well, I can wait until after you've asked your questions, but I just wanted to clarify
Well, I can wait until after you've asked your questions, but I, I just wanted to clarify. I don't think what trustee Diethe is asking is for a separate committee. I think if there is a committee within the school board that is already working with public health, you know, and she can correct me if I'm not heading in the right direction, but yeah, I, we have had this discussion so many times and, and yes, maybe background because of COVID has been put off, but you know, this term of council, we have had this discussion two or three times. And I would agree with, with trustee Diethe and I'd be happy to second the motion that staff be directed to, to work together between the school board and, and public health and get this back on the agenda. Because with this being the last meeting of this term and this group, you know, everybody's either forgotten or it's only those of us who have been around for a while. Angie's new. And, you know, Tamara, I don't think we need to have the pushback on a whole separate committee. That's not what we're asking for. That's not what trustee Diethe is asking for. So let's just, if we can, just keep it simple, get it back on the agenda and, and have that kind of direction. If, if that meets with what trustee Diethe is looking for. And I, I would like to hear from Angie on that too. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Diethe, do you want to just clarify if that's what your, your hope is?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
Okay, thanks. And Angie Burden, if you want to jump in?
Thank you. Angie Burden, General Manager of Healthy and Safe Communities for the City of Hamilton. Through you, madam chair, to the trustee. I can definitely speak with Dr. Richardson and ask her to provide some support. I, because this is, this conversation started before my time, I, I'm looking for a bit of clarification. And what I'm understanding is that you would be looking for a list of activities in the ways that public health and the school board are collaborating in terms of services and programs that are being provided jointly or in service to students within the school. And I just want to check in. Have I got that correct?
Trustee Diethe?
Yes. I think so. I mean, I think that's a big piece of it. So I'm going to, like I said, because there's some history behind this, but, and, and I hate when people bring up other regions because I always hate it when people bring up other school boards and say, well, look how this school board does it. Is, I just know where this conversation came from when I first spoke with the director, our previous director, was in regards to some of the work that we were seeing in Halton where the region, public health, I believe Children's Aid Society and the school boards were working collaboratively on a framework. And it, it really helped to, you know, there were some checks and balances and, and some training. And so that everybody had kind of a shared vision of what health and wellbeing would look like in that region. So I think that was what we were starting to, how can we look at this in, in this region? And, and like I said, I know public health have been working hard. I know the city has worked hard. I know the youth strategy and all those things in place, which are fantastic. I just think for, to see that collaboration and how it's, you know, making sure that it, it, not just aligning, but making sure that, you know, like I said, perhaps that framework in place where we can say, yes, this is what we're working towards and this is how we're working towards it. Does that make sense?
Through, for you, madam chair, to the trustee, I think I'm, so my hesi, I, I agree that it, I, that a framework around how we are working together towards shared public health outcomes is an important thing. I know that there is a lot of collaboration happening between public health and the school. I think my hesitation is around, not sure at this point what kind of resources would be required to develop this kind of framework. And I'm not 100% sure of the goal or the sort of that, what we're trying to achieve. And I, I think from Dr. Richardson's perspective, public health currently is in a lot of, we're, we're trying to make decisions about what programs can continue. There have been a lot of programs that have stopped. Public health has a strategic plan already that is underway that prioritizes certain programs and services that are critical in nature for children and youth. Some of this work is also contained in our, our youth strategy. And so I, what I want to be careful of is, is not committing to another piece of work that will add to public health's workload. And especially as Dr. Richardson isn't here to talk about the work that's already underway. And if there is an example of a framework that we are saying we want to adopt in Hamilton that is working in Halton, perhaps the first step is to take a look at that framework. And I'm saying that without, without having participated in the previous discussions. And I, I'm really trying to protect our teams for the critical work underway and knowing how, how much workload is on their plate and the staffing challenges. So I'm not, that's, I'm trying to bring that perspective and trying to understand what it is that we need in terms of helping public health and the school board advance on shared priorities. So I'm, I'm, I'm still looking for a bit of clarification around the purpose.
So I can, so, so what, when we were talking about a framework is my, when we met with public health, Dr. Richardson and, and our previous director, we looked at a framework, but then public health were developing a framework. And I think it was five priorities. And I believe that has changed again. And I'm not sure what it is now. So I'm, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I know there's a lot going on and continues. I mean, COVID's not gone. But I just don't want that work to disappear because I know there was some work being done and because it hadn't reported back to this committee, I'm, I'm not sure what happened with it. And with everything else that's gone on over the last number of years, I just want to make sure that we continue to capture it. So I'm not sure where public health is with that. Like I said, they had, I believe, five things. And then I'm, my understanding was it had changed again. So it's just making sure that we all know and say, yes, like these are the priorities. This is what the framework is. This is what we're all working towards. And like I said, that could have been happening between our board and, and public health already. I'm just not sure.
Thank you. I just know that Mayor Eisenberger did have to leave, but we do still have quorum. And councillor Partridge had also put her hand up. Did you want to add to the discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. And Angie, thank you for the explanation. And, and I hear the hesitancy in your voice. We know how, you know, the pressures are, but I think, and, and, you know, the person from public health who had carriage of this is no longer with public health or the city. But perhaps what we really need, if, if, if there is already collaboration going on, an ongoing collaboration between the school board and public health staff, perhaps what would be helpful would be an information report. Not a long detailed report, but just an overview of where we're going. If public health is working on a strategy, if the ongoing talks are with the school board, and I certainly hope that they are because it was really, it was based on, when we first brought it forward, and I think this was eight years ago. You know, it, it was based on a model that was happening, I believe it was through John A. McDonald downtown. And it was a wellness hub that was happening in the school and that had the participation of nurses, et cetera, et cetera. It's more to do with their mental health and with providing assistance. You know, there was, there was pregnancy examinations, sexual health talk, assistance, all that kind of stuff. So if that's currently going on, again, let's keep it simple and perhaps just have an update that, that regularly comes back to this committee because that's a piece that, that is missing and is very, very critical to the wellbeing of our youth and our students. So Angie, is, does that make a little, a little clearer for you?
Through you, madam chair, to the councillor. I think that would be great. I'm wondering if it is a request of Dr. Richardson or one of her staff to come and make a presentation on the framework that public health is using, including COVID recovery planning, especially as it relates, or in particular as it relates to work with students.
I'm seeing nods.
I think that's a good place to start for sure. I think. Thank you.
Perhaps the next committee can then look at future steps to have regular updates and, and what those might look like in collaboration with the school board as well. Thank you. Tamara, I'll just check in. Or Leah, do we need a motion for this? Or can we just plan to have that on our next agenda?
Through you, madam chair, it's Tamara. Leah is asking for clarification on the motion itself, but yes, we do need a motion. It's for providing direction to staff to report back to the committee. So we do need a motion for that. If we could just clarify the wording, that would be great.
Thank you, councillor Partridge. Would you like to?
Yeah, absolutely. So the, and, and Tamara, you can pretty it up, but basically a direction to staff at the city and public health and in, in collaboration with the city, sorry, with the school board to bring a report back on a regular basis to this committee on the strategies going forward to assist, provide services to students around wellbeing and mental health issues. And that the report come back at the December meeting. The next meeting is December. Is that correct, madam chair? Tamara?
Through the chair, through, through the chair. I was, I was, you caught me off guard there for a second. Through, through you, madam chair, we don't have another meeting scheduled before the end of term. We don't, we're not quite sure when the next meeting will be. If the committee wishes that to be in December, we could probably manage to do that. More likely it would be in the new year.
Yeah, I'm hesitant to provide any, any kind of edict or direction to the next term of council. I think they'll have enough on their plate. So let's just say at the, the next meeting of the, of the committee.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by trustee Diethe.
Thank you. Right, so we have that motion. If that's, that's clear for everyone. From, moved by councillor Partridge, seconded by trustee Diethe. Any further discussion or questions? I'm not seeing any. Is all in favor by show of hands? Thank you. That carries. Okay, that moves us to our last item, item 15, adjournments. I'm looking for a mover and a seconder to adjourn. I've got councillor Powers and councillor Partridge moving in second and all in favor. Thank you so much. Thanks, everyone. It was great to see you and all the best since this is our last meeting together. Hopefully we'll cross paths in new ways in the future.
Thank you, everyone. And thank you, madam chair. That was a good meeting. Thank you, trustee Diethe, and welcome councillor Partridge or councillor Powers. Hi, everybody.
And I just want to say thank you to the city for all their support around this. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a great day, everyone.
You too. Bye.